Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March the 9th will come to order. Are there any non-agenda comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we have no minutes to approve. Is there any new business that wants to be brought forward? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move right into our primary agenda item for the evening, which is a continuation of the public hearing on the 2015 docket of planning code amendments regarding the South Riverside Plan and Code Amendments. And to start us off, we will have a presentation from staff.
Thank you, and good evening. I have a very short presentation, and much as you've already seen, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but basically just explain that we are looking at a potential rezone of this R-9600 area between the specialized senior housing overlay area on the left of this image and I-405 on the right. This was started with an application from the Furman's to rezone their two parcels. Staff recommended looking at the whole area, and in the end, the rezone was done on the two parcels, but the examination of the whole area was deferred. The Furman's, when it went to council as part of the periodic plan and code update, they asked to add the specialized or extend the specialized senior housing overlay into this area as well. But in January, they submitted a letter requesting to defer it as staff had recommended. The analysis that we did took into account the significant critical areas in this area. There are numerous wetlands, streams, and steep slopes, so that the capacity analysis discounted those areas and tried to come up to a realistic estimate of how much development capacity there was in this area currently and with the proposed R-7200 zoning. Like I said, the SSHO expansion has essentially been taken off the table for now. I think it's still something that we recommend looking at as part of the future aspect of our housing strategy plan, but I do want to have this slide showing the existing area in the quarter-mile circle around it that's referenced in the comprehensive plan policy establishing that area. So here is the letter from Apollo Furman requesting deferring expansion of the SSHO, so our recommendation is not to expand it at this time and include it as part of the housing strategy plan either this year or in the future. The docketing discussion is going to happen next week at council, March 15th, so that's when they'll determine what items to initiate and what the priorities will be. Affordable housing, that's going to be the main focus of tonight's meeting. We've had two or three presentations now by Arch, and they're going to do another presentation following this one to get into some more details about what Planning Commission would recommend in terms of an affordable housing requirement and/or incentives in this area as part of, associated with the upzone. So just to recap, the issues, recommendations from staff are to expand the R-7200 rezone to the entire R-9600 area between the SSHO and I-405. We would like for Commission to actually make a decision on that tonight. Like I said, we're recommending not to expand the SSHO, and if Planning Commission concurs with the above, we're recommending that no further transportation analysis should be needed. We've gone over that in past meetings. We're recommending that we rely on our existing critical areas ordinance to address landslide and other environmental issues, and that we consider affordable housing provisions as part of the rezone with the Arch presentation to follow. So in terms of process, now we would recommend taking public testimony, providing direction on these issues, and draft findings if you're ready to get into those. And then, actually, after taking the public testimony, you could go ahead with the Arch presentation and that discussion, but I would like to see if we can come to a decision on the core issue of expanding the R-7200 rezone. And then, if necessary, and I think we're probably not quite ready to resolve this tonight, but, and so the continuation would be to April 13th. So with that.
Thank you. Before you step down, any questions of Mr. Boyd from any of us on his presentation? Commissioner Stedman.
Can you just remind us what the actual number of unit, the unit count difference would be in rezoning from R-9600 to R-7200 for that specific area?
It goes from 37 lots or dwelling units to 52, so it's an increase of 15.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks Dave. So at this point, this is a public hearing, and before we deliberate here, we'd like to open this up to any of the members of the public that are here. So we'd ask you to come forward if you have any public comment to make at this time. This is your chance. Glad folks are here, I'm glad you're interested, but, and I do, we have had a public, we've had public hearings on this in the past, and we've heard from many of you in the past, and so not necessary for you to come and repeat yourselves, but very much appreciate all of you being here. And, okay, so at this point, again, I'm not, I'm wanting to cut anybody off, but I think we're going to move forward.
You could also open up for comment after the Arch presentation if there is.
Yes, so we'll also, the affordable housing part of this evening's agenda will come after this. We're going to deliberate on this specific staff request with regards to the change in zoning, but there will be another opportunity for the public to comment with regards to the affordable housing presentation. So I guess I'd like to see us deliberate a little bit and then see if we're ready to go ahead and put forward a motion with regards to what the staff is asking from us. Is there anybody that would like to kick this off? Mr. Cape?
Sorry, just one quick clarification. Are we just voting on the expansion of 7200 outside of the Furman property? The initial vote way back when was to upzone that to 7200. Are we not discussing that property when we're looking at the whole expansion?
That's correct, that's already been done. So now the question is just whether to go forward with expanding that to that whole zone.
Mr. Fleet?
Actually, and on that note, thanks for that, Patrick, actually. So legally, would, I mean, would that be considered a spot rezone then if we were to not move forward with expanding the 90, sorry, 7200 to the rest of the areas, or are you able to comment on that?
Technically, it's not. Our zoning matches our comprehensive plan designation, so because we're doing both at the same time, it isn't spot zoning from a very strict technical or narrow aspect is when you're going contrary to the comprehensive plan designation on a specific small parcel. So, but we do think that the rationale, the arguments that were made for the rezone on the Furman property apply equally to the rest of that zone, so we think that's the better planning solution. That's why staff initially recommended that you just defer the whole area and do it all at once, but that action's already been taken, and this is an opportunity to expand it to the entire area.
Thanks Dave.
I guess I'll give my general, overall thoughts. I think the overall increase in density we're talking about is not humongously significant, 15 lots in quite a large area. There's aspects that I like about moving it to R-7200, as it's walkable to downtown, it's close to, you know, most of amenities within the heart of Bothell. I guess my hesitation hasn't left, and that's probably why I won't be supporting the upzone today for the whole area, is we've had several citizens come in and discuss the water issues along East Riverside Drive, that while technology and engineering has improved, we might be able to help with the stormwater catchment, I'm still worried about groundwater. I think that's a concern moving forward, it's one of our slide areas, and I do believe in the critical area process that we'll get some of these identified, but if we're looking at a blank slate, I wouldn't pick this area as one that would, you know, fit the criteria that needs to be upzoned. I think the Furman's put a lot of time into their proposal, and, you know, we're not talking about their parcel specifically, but looking at the area at a whole, I don't want to further create additional issues for people that already live in the area. And I don't know if the soundness of the people that live at the base of, base of the hill, you know, that development made sense in the first place, but I also don't want to increase the amount of water that's running onto their property, and so I think that's my caution moving forward. That combined with some of the traffic issues, which right now we don't have a solution for, this isn't going to significantly increase the density, but I think we've heard varying levels of concern by people that live in the area. So that's currently where I stand, but I'd like to hear from the rest of you too.
Mr. Fleet?
Yes, and thanks for everybody who's, I've seen a lot of these people faces that have shown up for quite some time with regards to the rezone. Yeah, this is, this is interesting. Back last year, I know we're not talking about particularly the Furman property, but back when I was in support of that upzone, I was only, I guess I was only in favor of that if it wasn't to be applied to the whole area, because I do, for one thing, they put together a lot of time and presentation, gave us a lot of different examples, data, visual, as well as numbers. And then, there are, there are some other things that came, not to light afterwards, but there is some potential slope hazards there, and I certainly would want to compound that, even if the upzone of the Furman property goes forward, or, you know, I would want to expand on that error if that was indeed an error to upzone that in the first place. I think by leaving, oh, thanks for that map, so I'm probably going to be supporting moving forward without the upzone to the entire area. I kind of want to see, I would like to see what happens if, if and when, you know, that is developed, see how that impacts it. I'm actually not, I've never really been concerned about the traffic with regards to, like Blake was, that was a great question by Blake, it's only going to be 15 more housing units, so I haven't been concerned with that as much as I am with the environmental impact and runoff onto the south side of East Riverside, which we've heard from the property owners. I think somebody's in the, in the audience today who spoke on that in the past, so, yeah, I guess that's up for now. I might try to jump back in, but that's all I have, my comments for now.
Mr. Cecil?
Thanks Dave for your summary again. So I guess similar to some of the other commissioners, the 15 lot increase to me doesn't seem like a, it seems negligible, I guess would be the word that I would use. In terms of the critical areas, we're leaning on our critical areas regulations to address whether it's slopes or water, or traffic, not traffic, but the critical areas, so wetlands and streams. Those regulations apply to, it doesn't matter what, in other words, it doesn't matter what zone we're in, those regulations still apply. A stream or flowing water doesn't know where a lot line is. This upzone is not going to change the developable area in this subarea. So I guess I don't, I don't see, I don't see a big issue, I guess, with critical areas. I think, I don't think you're going to change from one zone to the other what the impacts are. They still have to be mitigated, sound engineering practices still have to be used. So I guess with that, I mean, we've talked about this for several months, but from my perspective, I'm, I'm in favor of the 7200 for this area, so, thank you.
Mr. Stedman?
Dave, thank you again for the summary. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the critical area, the water issue and the slope issue, because as Commissioner Cecil just said, the critical area ordinance, I think, will cover that. And in fact, as I see it, I think intelligent development will actually address some of those water issues that are currently affecting some of the, some of the residents that are downstream from them. The other thing is, I think 15 additional housing units would be a maximum, because that doesn't even take into account, I'm assuming, David, correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't even take into account the critical areas. Is that correct? So that'd be like 15 would be a max?
Well, the analysis I do, the capacity analysis did take into account the critical areas. So I discounted those areas, I discounted areas for roads.
Okay, okay, so 15 is the number then, plus or minus. Okay. I'm not, I'm not concerned with the additional traffic that would be generated with an additional 15 plus or minus units. I like the fact that this is very, very close to our downtown, where we're trying to increase the walkability, et cetera. So I think for that, for those reasons, I will be supporting a rezone from the R-9600 to R-7200.
Thank you. My concerns were initially traffic and response times for public safety, and I think those concerns have been met. I also know from spending time in this particular part of our city, there are, there's a significant amount of water runoff that has occurred primarily in housing developments that were built 15, 20-plus years ago, and the engineering just was, has, it just basically failed. It failed those neighborhoods, and it failed our city. I want, I'm assured that that has changed, and that the critical areas ordinance is sufficient, and really, whether it was R-9600 or R-7200, we'd have these issues, or we wouldn't, and that the critical areas ordinance will mitigate the problems that this part of our city has had in the past. We've heard from the public, and there are members of the public opposed to this, and there are members of the public in favor of it. And so I've certainly not picked up a uniformity of public opinion on this, certainly passion on both sides. Our comprehensive plan policy actually calls for a greater density in this particular subarea, so strategically, we, the language is there in our comprehensive plan. While not guaranteed, going to R-7200 creates a greater likelihood for a more affordable home product. I think that's a good goal for Bothell. So I think that's an argument in favor of this. We also are talking about clustering. That's not something we're going to decide this evening, but it is something that we're looking at, we're studying. I know the city council has directed us to study it, and to me, the idea of a little, a little greater density product, combining it with clustering, could make for a very, very innovative and interesting part of our city. So for those reasons, I'm going to be in favor of supporting staff's recommendation. Mr. Fleet?
Yes, Stephen, thanks for those comments, and thanks for touching on the clustering. That's what I meant to, I feel like the fact that we've kind of, we're kind of moving forward with this clustering potential possibility for the city, it's pretty exciting. I feel like I'm really hopeful that that's going to be in place if we do move forward with it before we do any more upzones, because I think it has the potential to, in itself, almost be an upzone for a property and a developer who's wanting to develop on that, so.
I think we're going, ready to, if someone would like to articulate a motion with regards to staff's recommendation.
Dave, do you have that, do you have, there we go, thank you.
The last one? There we go.
Okay, here, so. I make a motion that we expand the R-9600, that we expand the R-7200 rezone to the entire R-9600 area between the SSHO and I-405.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So this motion kind of still tables the affordable housing portion of this, so that's not a part of what our recommendation is tonight?
Correct. This is just on the rezone, it tables the affordable housing as well as the SSHO overlay.
Okay, and those are items that we're going to continue to discuss over time and...
At least the affordable housing is part of this, so.
Okay, thank you. Did I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Let's take a count. Commissioner Stedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Cecil?
Aye.
Commissioner Cape?
Nay.
Commissioner Fleet?
Nay.
And I vote aye. So the motion passes 3-2. All right. Is there anything else on that that we need to discuss?
I guess as long as there aren't any, any concerns about the other staff recommendations, I think we can move on to the affordable housing issue.
The other staff recommendations with regards to what?
To not expand the SSHO at this time, to, that there's no need for further traffic, transportation analysis, and that the critical areas ordinance does address landslide and environmental issues.
Well, I think the critical, yeah, I think we're, we, at least those of us in favor of this, believe the critical areas ordinance addresses the landslide and other environmental issues. I don't think we need further transportation analysis, and I think we're pretty, we're in agreement of not expanding the SSHO at this time, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Fleet?
I do, and thanks, and thanks everybody for coming. It was a tough vote for me to vote on that particular subject. I'm looking forward to moving forward on what the council decides with regards to it. The on point number 15, I just want to clarify this on the draft findings, Dave. It says the R-9600 zoning south of East Riverside Drive between specialized, so is that a correct wording, or does that limit, am I reading that wrong? On page three, it says the 9600 zoning south of East Riverside Drive between specialized senior housing and R-405. So, because it's south and north of East Riverside Drive, isn't it?
No.
No, it's just south.
No, it's just the south.
Just the south side.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So, yeah, here is East Riverside Drive here, and the zone we're talking about is just, is this area here.
Yes, my apologies. You have it correct.
Next, a quick question. Dave, so north, if you want to go back to that slide, sorry about that. We all like that slide, by the way. Don't delete it ever. So the current zoning north of East Riverside, am I reading that right, that that's 2800, R-2800?
One thing that this, that fell out for some reason on this slide is there is an R-8400 zone in this area directly across from the Furman's properties.
Okay, gotcha.
But other than that, the zoning north of East Riverside is R-2800 and R-4000 MHP.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So Dave, I think you've gotten the direction from us that you wanted this evening on those motions. Okay. All right, at this point, are we ready to move into the affordable housing part of our agenda?
I think so.
And are we ready?
Good evening, Commission, and my name's Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch Regional Coalition for Housing. We have a PowerPoint presentation here for you to sort of walk through, and for three of you, this is a familiar drill. We went through this last week with the, with the Nike Hill area, and so it's pretty much the same conversation, so some of it might be a little quicker this time if, because you guys have done it, but I know there's a couple commissioners who weren't here. And what we're basically trying to do is walk through, as I think we talked with you several times ago, and I think others were here, is in our work right now, working with staff on affordable housing, is we're sort of saying there's certain, you talked some about citywide or other parts of the city having programs for affordability. There are certain components that we think are key questions to ask for any specific area that you're looking at rezones or affordability programs, and then there's some that are sort of universal, that are more the administration straight, you know, would treat consistently around the city. And so what we've been focusing on last week is those questions we think are ones that you ask for each specific area, and they're listed in your staff memo. There's like five questions, and we're going to walk through those with you tonight. And then, what we would be then doing is coming back based on your direction with some draft language. So we're not asking for decisions tonight, this is more guidance so that we can draft something for you to look at. And depending on how we do here, I might, you know, there are some new faces here, so it might take, it might take some time, but if it doesn't, we get through the basic questions. I was going to go quickly through with you what the central issues are, you know, the common issues, just so that you would know what those are for that section, which we'll also be bringing back to you. But first and foremost, is covering the basic questions related to the South Riverside rezone, and how affordability, some guidance you may have for us, and drafting some language for your consideration, okay? So, any questions before I start? So these are the questions that we're talking about, they're related to sort of size of project affordability level, how much affordability, and alternative compliance. So, and it's organized first, the first question I think is really critical on a property like this, which we talked about with you some in last week, which is because this is a more single-family detached housing area at the, at the current time, and with the new zoning in general, that what some cities have done, and the particular development standard that we think is most relevant to this kind of site, is the first bullet, which is allowing some form of either swallow a lot, or more typically attached units, in order to allow those to accommodate affordable units. And I have the same pictures from we had last week, but there are two council member, I mean, two commissioners who were not here then, so I'd like to go through those again. These were meant to illustrate examples of attached housing in small lot homes that have been built. All of these examples are in areas of East King County, and some of them are just conventional market rate housing that have been built in single-family neighborhoods, and others are explicitly affordable units. And I guess I could see how much you were paying attention to last week and ask commissioners who were here to tell us which were which as we go through these, but I won't put you on that spot. These first... These first two here are developments, the one on the right is in Redmond and the one on the left is in Bellevue. And the one on the right is just done through provisions that the city allow on slightly larger lots. They do allow multiplex units, so this has no affordability provision per se. This is just something that was built on an infill lot that was a larger lot, all the other homes in the neighborhood are single-family. And so that's one example, the one on the left is also both are market rate units in a new development near a multi, near a commercial area, but it is in a single-family development. And here I believe, I'm not sure if the builder did it because there was a period of time in which Bellevue required new affordable housing in all new development, and then they changed it and they were already halfway through the plating process. Or if it's because there's a creek behind the house and the city was doing a PUD approval. It's one of the two, I'm not sure, it is not an afford, these are not affordable units though. These two examples are affordable units. In one case, the one on the left, it is an area that is primarily single-family homes, this is in the North Redmond area. And this house is a duplex, you really only see the one unit, the other entrance is around the corner to the right, on the right-hand side of the picture. And the garages are split. The one on the left is a single-family neighborhood that was developed though in the last 10 years. And I originally thought most that the affordable units were just the duplexes, but they actually ended up doing a number of the market rate units as well as attached units. So here is an example near, near downtown Redmond. And there the developer did do much of the housing in this area, even though the whole area in general is single-family. And you can tell the affordable unit is just have a single car garage with a driveway. So that's how they still accomplish having two parking spaces. The other half of that unit, and it's not the best picture there, is actually a two-car garage in that particular case. So that's an example of one thing builders have done to keep costs in line when they do affordable units is they might only give them one parking garage with then with the apron, the driveway being serving as a second parking space. And typically, the affordable unit is smaller than the market rate units in that, in this development. Which is again allowed, we still expect a certain number of bedrooms, but they are, they may only be, but they may not be the same square footage. This development is up in the Lakemont area of Bellevue, so that's the area up on the hill south of I 90. This is all market rate housing. And what's interesting about this neighborhood is this is a development, and again, you still, you have some slopes, you probably have some, I'm not sure in this particular site, if you have some of the same issues you're looking at here. But a solution was to include a combination of multiplexes and single-family. So I probably went through more of a PUD process because of the age of this project. You can see how they treated the garages. On, both of the units on the right are multiplex units. The unit in the upper left is a single-family and you can see the size of the homes aren't necessarily significantly different in terms of the physical buildings on, that you're seeing in these photos. And then you can see the way they treated the garages, they took advantage of slope to sort of tuck the garages underneath. And then on the right, you are looking at the streetscape there and you have a mixture of single-family. I think in this picture, two of them are multiplexes and the other three are single-family in this particular picture that you're looking at here. This is a relatively new development, it's now being probably built in the last couple of years. And again, this is also in North Redmond, there are a number of developments in North Redmond now that are including affordable housing as requirement through the city of Redmond. And I think I, these are all the same neighborhood, the, you can see the top left are the duplex units. The lower left is the house immediately adjacent to this home. And then I took another shot so that you can see the duplex unit and then in the background, you can see two single-family homes next to it. And one of the reasons I put it, I have the series of slides here, is often the question is, does the garage maybe in a duplex, is it designed, is it overwhelmed? And there's different ways it's treated. But I would point out, when you look at this particular neighborhood, that the frontage of the market rate homes, in some cases, is actually more garage front than actually the duplex units have. Especially the ones you see in the background there, the entrances are recessed in those two single-family homes in the background, whereas the entrances here are right on the street for the duplex. So just wanted to show you that, if you look at just the duplex, you might think that, but in the context of that neighborhood, a lot of similar character to the rest of the neighborhood. And then finally, this is actually now taking you out, this is the one that's not in East King County. But this is showing you how an example of, these aren't duplexes, these are actually fourplexes where they use, the split isn't vertically, the split is horizontal and also vertical. And this is in, again, it's in Capitol Hill, so much generally, it is a single-family neighborhood, but lots are generally smaller there. And the way this house was conceived is, is that you see the front entrance very much like other older homes in the neighborhood. You drive between the two fourplexes and then you have literally parking behind the house and then a lid over the parking. And that courtyard you see there is the open space for those units. And then you can see the staircase in the backs is the entrance to one of the upper units. So that's it, it's sort of taking it to a different kind of scale, but you just might be interested in seeing that. This is another development in the Lakemont area of Bellevue. These were lots that were originally designed to be affordable duplex units in a larger subdivision. In the end, they ended up being market rate units because the city did change their rules and they allowed an in-loop payment, which that builder elected to do in this case. But you can see here, the two units on the left are both duplex units, they're across, you can see the lots where they are located in the neighborhood. You can see how they treated the garages here, in both cases, they split the garages, so only one is on the front. And then you see the, the house on the upper right is the single-family house next to the duplex unit. Again, the scale of the overall building is pretty similar. And those duplex units each, I think we listed them recently, and I think they might have been a half a million assessed value, I can't remember. 400 to 500 was the assessed value, I believe, of each of those duplex units. So again, just sort of showing you that even without doing it for affordability, the market is looking towards these types of solutions going into the future. This is what would be small lot cottage developments. I don't, I'm sorry that I got one picture in there still left over from Capitol Hill, but you're seeing two different projects that are in the Rose Hill area of Kirkland and Redmond, one is in Kirkland and one is in Redmond. Typically, what we've seen, when you have seen cottage developments, we haven't seen a lot of them developed. When they've been developed, they're usually done like this where there's more of them built. So they're, and they're usually built around like a common area courtyard. Both of these that were done here were done in that configuration. So we haven't seen as much just standalone cottages, but that is maybe something that could be looked at. And both of these were done in single-family neighborhoods and surrounded by single-family areas, but they had a large enough parcel where they could actually take this approach. City of Kirkland lets you basically, if you do cottages, they let you do like one and a half, I think it's like one and a half, as, you know, so you can do 1.5 instead of one per lot or on average a size lot. And then finally, this is another development in North Redmond that's under construction now. And what I thought was interesting about this is this is, the reason I'm pointing this out is the idea of is the market, is the market there for doing attached housing in single-family neighborhoods? And this is a development that could have gone different routes and they could have done for the affordable units, could have just done duplexes. But they elected that the buildings that you, the building you see on the lower level, and you can also see the upper right, it's on the right-hand half of that upper right-hand picture, is they are triplexes. And only the middle unit is affordable, it's basically three townhouse configuration units. And only the middle one is affordable, the two on the outside are market rate units with no affordability restrictions per se. And for whatever reason, that developer chose to go that route, the brown building, the light brown building is a single-family, so some of the units are single-family. And then you have these multiplex units where it's a mixture of market rate and affordable units. And then finally, this is to show you, this is a building that was built in a, actually near where I live, in Bellevue. And it is a fourplex, I can't remember if it's a three or a fourplex, that was built on a corner lot in a single-family neighborhood. And in this neighborhood, there's two or three of these homes that the city, for whatever reason permitted, and maybe it's, there are some streams in the area, so sort of at the base of a hill, very similar to Riverside, Riverside that you're looking at. And this, there are, in this old neighborhood, there are several multiplexes that were permitted in, in that community. And then finally, this is an example, a little bit higher density, but this is a development that was done as a transition and I'm doing some of these slides because I know this is a general question that's been posed for you, so I just want, I showed you some examples, not necessarily, I think they're all Riverside, but thought they might be interesting for you to see. This is in an area that's right in the transition from a single-family to a multifamily zone. I'm only showing, I don't have a picture of the other side of the street that we're looking at, of the home on the right hand, on the upper left. But that home is a triplex. And the way it worked is they built an alley behind it and so you had the two units on the front. And then the third unit is above the garages off the alley in the back. When you turn, if I were to turn around from where I am standing, you are looking at like 5,000 square foot lot, single-family homes on the other side of the street. So one side of the street is all these multiplex ownership units that go up down one side of the street with the alley behind it, and the other side of the street are all single-family homes with garages off the, the main street. So this is just meant to give you, show you examples of different things that are occurring in the last 15 years in East King County for multiplex types units, so. And I'm going to go back up and I just want to re-point out the slide. I think it's this one here, so that you can see the lot sizes where these duplex units were accommodated. To show you that they're generally the same size, they, depending on the zone, they might need to be a little bit larger. Any of the duplexes we showed you are on lot sizes anywhere from 9,000 down to like 6,000 square feet. So that's sort of the range of the lot sizes you saw here. But they become a very important part of your conversation if you want to look at affordability. Because as this slide shows you, what, you know, one home sells for a million dollars on one lot and on the other one, maybe you have two duplexes selling if it were market rate at 400,000, you're getting a similar amount of economic value out of the lot. And I think that's an important thing when we start looking, when we get to the next question or the, the main question for looking at affordability, is if you're enabling someone to have a duplex unit, you're having less of an economic hit on them in a single-family setting because in that land area where they'd only have one single-family home, you're allowing them to help to create the affordability by letting them have two ownership units in that configuration. So that's why, that's why we posed this question first for you. Is if, in looking at the Riverside area, is there a willingness to consider the idea of a multiplex if you have an affordability requirement in that neighborhood? So that's the first question to you.
Before we go beyond that, the threshold development or affordability level, I think really great, the photo's helpful, a great discussion. And you've, you've got, you've got a number of bullet points there. Mainly you focused on cottages, small lots, multiplexes or affordable units, rather than the others around parking requirements, open space requirements. Are you saying that that first item, the one that you, we've just taken 10 minutes to discuss, is what you think is the most applicable to what we ought to consider here in Bothell?
For a single, for a single-family zone area, yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Sullivan? Commissioner Bleed?
Yeah, and, yeah, thanks Steve for stopping us partway through, sometimes it's easier to remember and, and apply the question as we go through. Arthur always brings such a good presentation along, there's always so much information for me. So with regards to the pictures that you show, that you've shown, how did Redmond and Kirkland or Bellevue, how did those, yeah, how did those neighborhoods, that one's obviously an older established neighborhood, these are newer.
Right.
How did they write into the code, I guess that maybe that's what we were just talking about, how these duplexes, triplexes exist in a single-family residential neighborhood? So you're saying that, is that what you're kind of just touching on with regards to giving them, if they, as part of their affordability to, to create maybe a larger footprint, but have actually two homes joined together? How do they do that in the code, how's that written up?
So if, in our conversation last week, what we said is we need to sit down with staff and sort of look at how your code is written. Because we started bringing up building circles and things like that and how does that play out? When I helped Bellevue, this is a long time ago, so back then they didn't have building circles and stuff. But what Bellevue basically said is that they looked at, they allowed that parcel, so the two that you see pointed to, they allowed those if they wanted, the builder wanted to, to put a lot line in the middle, so that those could have technically been two. But from a land use provisions point of view, they considered those two homes essentially as one home, as one lot. And so those homes meet all the setback requirements on all the exterior. And then what the city had to write into the code is, except for that one boundary where the walls are shared, there you don't have to have a setback. So what they basically said is if you're doing a duplex for affordability, you can treat those two units as a single and will allow you to put a lot line and we give you an exception to set, to lot line, you know, setback for that shared wall. That was the solution then. If you say you want to do this, we'll have to sit down with your staff and look through how your, or how you write your regulations to see how would you need to tweak what you have now in order to accommodate it. But the first question is, do you want to try to accommodate it? And so when you say, well, is that the most important thing? Yeah, we might have to do something about setbacks, et cetera, to do that, but that'll all be driven because of the multiplex accommodation.
Just a sec, so, I think key question here, so you have the shared wall, if you will. It's still a single tax ID number.
You can go either way.
Because then, if you create two tax ID numbers, then you create the possibility that one could be sold and, they could be sold and owned separately.
We want them owned and sold separately. So that's why, so we allow, Bellevue wrote their code, and I believe Redmond is the same way. You can go either as a condominium or you can go as fee simple. You can go either way.
When you say you want it to be, allowed to be sold separately, you mean you have a duplex and you want one half of that duplex to be able to be sold and the other half not be sold?
Well, you want both.
You want that capability.
You want both of them to be owner occupied by separate owners.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right.
This is intended to be, again, this next, a general provision is we are assuming in a neighborhood like this, that the homes that are being built are owner, intended for owner occupancy. Therefore, we will be designing the affordable units to also be owner occupancy.
Okay, and, and, but you're saying it's not necessary to create separate tax parcel numbers?
You can set up a, we have some that have been done in this, near this neighborhood where the builder did do them as condominium. And so they, it's a tiny condo association for the duplex.
Got it, okay, interesting, yeah. It's a little standalone condo.
Right, and different builders have done it different ways.
All right.
And we let the builder make that call.
All right. Commissioner Cecil?
Yeah, I guess I mean tagging on to that whole thought, if you do a plat and those are two separate lots, they could be sold separately at the same time or different times. I'm assuming there's some conditions on those lots. Is it a condition that they be attached? Or, so I mean, we're not forcing an attached product, right?
Exactly, you are not, that's, you give the builder the choice of going that route.
But if it's platted that way.
Well, once he plat, I mean, yeah, I mean, the builder is going to do a plat and that's going to sort of potentially drive it.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is if you're selling lots and you sell one to one party and one to another party.
Right.
And there's this expectation that there's going to be a, a, a multiplex built there.
The affordability covenant should be, is linked to the plat. Because you're deciding then, that's where you're going to say, okay, you're doing this plat, how much affordability do you have to do, how are you going to do it? So you are in a single-family setting, you're negotiating the affordability with the person who does the subdivision.
So if the, if the developer plats it and, and is awarded or is allowed to, to do a duplex on these one or two lots, shouldn't those two be sold at the same time? I mean, you can't build a half a duplex.
Well, when they, right, when they build it, they're going to build a duplex and sell them at the same, yeah, they're going to bill them at this, bill them and sell them at the same time. But going into the future, now you have two separate homeowners.
Well, I guess in this, in the scenario where you have two separate lot owners that are potentially different builders.
Oh, oh, I, I don't think you're going to see that. We've never seen that, I mean, the duplex is going to have to be built at the same time.
Okay.
So that lot will have to be co-developed at the same, you know, that, I, I've never seen, every time we've had a duplex, that building is built all at once.
Yeah, and I guess is there a way to, to ensure that they're, they're owned by the same party or, or there's some assurance that there's a duplex going to be built there?
It will be in the plat. The plat will have that.
So it's some kind of condition on the plat?
Right.
Okay. There's a lot of other questions, but I just got to jump a couple more. So, separate owners, it's so, it's built at the same time, sold, initially sold at the same time, but going forward, they kind of begin to react independently. But I'm, I'm just thinking about ownership and where one owner says, oh, I want, I think I need to redo the roof.
Right.
I mean, they're going to do half the roof and, and, you know, or, you know, you know, you know what I'm saying, where it's kind of like, they start to take on a life of their own.
Right.
And yet they're, they're joined at the hip, if you will. Have you seen any? Have you seen any problems with that?
We had one issue with one home so far in about 20 years and, but it finally, it got taken care of eventually.
Is that kind of again, written into the covenants that decision-making on, on maintenance and other kind of structural decisions on the property will be jointly determined or?
That's part of the condo document that the builder creates.
All right.
If they do, if they take that route.
All right. Commissioner Cabe?
I know we'll get to this later in the presentation, but I'm assuming these neighborhoods are, there's mandatory, are these municipalities mandatory requirements for affordable housing? Or is this elective?
Redmond is mandatory. Bellevue's were mandatory. We do have a situation, I'd say in most cases, it's being driven by mandatory. There's one city that has mandatory and voluntary. If you go even further, it'd give you even more bonus if you do that. But for the most part, these are mandatory programs. They're generally mandatory, yes.
Okay. Just my thought being $400,000 for half of a duplex, $800,000 versus a million, back to your example. They're putting more in the, if, infrastructure cost to have two kitchens and four bathrooms versus one. It seems like it would have to be mandatory, otherwise people aren't going to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, pretty much. Yeah, most build, you know, the point that we made in showing you some of these is the market just chose to do that. I mean, we are seeing builders want to, for whatever reason, I can think of three or four reasons why builders would want to, to do a multiplex. Part of it is so they're not trying to sell all $800,000 homes. I mean, they don't probably, they probably like the idea of having different price points they're selling to. Because it's, there's a broader market to sell to. And I can't, so I can't exactly say why in North Redmond we're seeing this variety, a little more variety in terms of what builders are doing. But in terms of the affordability in a single-family neighborhood, it's sort of saying, hey, we changed the zoning for you. We need some affordability for that. We're, you know, you're going from 37 to 52 lots in this case.
Okay. I think, good discussion on that, but just to kind of, in the name of time, let's move forward. But I'd say before we move to threshold development size, I don't think we need to have a motion, but I, I, I'll just speak personally. I'm very much in favor of continued exploration. Basically, your recommendation for bullet item number one as something that we would include in our affordability housing strategy. So I don't know if any other comments on that or not, whether you're for or against what we've heard so far.
And what the comment, what the commission's guidance last week was, when you're drafting, give us some language to show us how to do this. And we can decide if when we see it all together, if we like that piece or not. And so the guidance was, give us something that shows you how this would work in this, in this particular case.
Great.
Or not, or not do that.
Great.
I was actually just going to suggest if you would go back over the recommendations that we, that we gave you last week, that might actually help this conversation for those that were not here.
Right. So the recommendation last week was to include the multiplex concept.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I wasn't here last week, so it's already been done. Okay. So let's move forward to threshold development.
Okay. So, taking the advice of Commissioner Stedman, on this one, the conversation, I believe last time was draft something, showing if you're 10 or more, that you would be required to do affordability onsite. But if it were under 10 units in the overall development, to look at an option where a builder could do some kind of in-lu fee, because it's only a fractional requirement. And so that was the guidance on this topic for when we looked at Nike Hill.
Commissioner Vliet?
Oh, and just for anybody who wasn't here last week, it was kind of interesting. Arthur was pointing out that these threshold sizes were kind of important because developers would, if it was 10, they'd go nine, and if it was four, they'd go three. So there was this, and that's why I guess I'd, I don't know what we decided last week, I mean, or what we're going to decide today. But I would like to, I'm very much in favor of having an affordability requirement for any new building. So regardless of thresholds, so one, for me, that's personally, but I don't know if that's what we're talking about now.
Commissioner Cabe?
I guess, could you provide a little bit more background? I'm sorry that we weren't here last week, but so if there was nine, a nine-house plat, they would not be required in that first bullet point, like the Redmond example. They would not be required, they would have to pay maybe a fee based on their percentage of that.
Correct. And then actually they, it's not, that's where you're going to decide around rounding is. In Redmond, if you're above six, they want you to do it. That rounds up to one. Kirkland sort of said, no, you can pay a fraction, no matter what, you know, anything below. So that's where, but generally speaking, yes, the idea is if you're not, at whatever point you don't round up in a requirement, then if you have a fractional requirement, you can just do a. So if we figured out that the in-lu fee per unit was $150,000, let's say, I'm just putting a number out there. Then you'd say, if you had a half a unit requirement, you would pay $75,000. Or if it's 100,000 or 50, whatever the number is, if you're a fraction, you'd pay that fraction. You know, we do the math on what would be the in-lu fee for a full unit. And then that's, and you do a fraction of that.
So if you just bought one lot, a 7,200 square foot lot, and you wanted to build one house, you'd have to pay a fractional percentage of the?
Right. Well, what, again, this will be tied to the plat. So it's not going to be the person who buys the individual lot. It's going to be the person who creates the plat. Will have to, as part of getting that plat finalized, paying in-lu payment for the plat.
Mr. Stedman?
Again, for those that weren't here, as a, as kind of a summary of this, basically what we're, what we're suggesting, and, and what Arthur was going to come back to us with, with specifics is, we're saying that 10% of any new large developments, 10 units, whatever, 10% of that would or should be affordable housing of some sort. And, and so if it was less than 10 units in there, you know, you can't build nine tenths of a, of a, of a house. So you would pay a fee into the fund. Is that, is that an accurate summary?
Yes.
Yep.
So we'll have language and it'll be easy. I think the discussion gets easier if you see language in front of you. So that will show you where sort of some of the key questions come into it. Because you're asking really good questions about threshold, what's that mean and, and stuff. But the idea is, if you're doing, if your requirement that gets triggered is less than one unit, you allow someone to make a payment, some fractional payment of a full unit in-lu amount that gets used for affordable housing and other programs through the city.
Mr. Cabe?
I guess one piece of information that I'd like, specific to Bothell, is what the typical development size would be, David. I don't know if we have facts and figures on that, but I want to make sure whatever we're putting in place would have an actual reward. So if, if 10 is the right number, if we're seeing a lot of developments in that size, I know we have some large developments, but we have a lot of, you know, one acre lots that are turned into four and five houses that we might not see a gain from those.
So this is one of the issues that would be done on a result, right, right. So here, you probably, you may not see many at 10 or more. So I mean, that's the thing, is you have smaller parcels. So if someone would come back when you ask that question, you should be looking at this result. We're not asking you to answer that question for any situation in the future. This is where you can tailor the threshold situation to the different areas where you're applying an affordability program. So we should probably, it sounds like what you'd be interested in seeing is a sense, but again, you don't know if someone's going to combine two or three lots and then do a plat over what's now two or three lots, or if they're just going to do it for one. And one reason you may not go all the way down to one is because what if someone just has a lot and they decide to rebuild a house? And they're not really doing anything, they're not changing what they're doing. Somebody may do that. And so those are things I think when you see language, we'll come back to your, you'll come back and talk more about. But we want to at least get the context of over a certain size, you do it onsite, that's the preference. Under a certain size, you allow an in-lu because it's not a full unit. That's the concept we would work in drafting with. Or, I mean, that's what was the direction for the others, the Nike Hill area.
Mr. Cecil?
So Arthur, I guess I, I mean, you threw out 150,000, and I'm assuming that had some basis. I'm not, you know, applicable to every city maybe, but that seems like a lot to me. But I guess I would like to have that as part of our discussion, as we're talking about.
We're going to get to that in a minute.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
But yeah, that's Kirkland and that's, you know, their more high-cost area, but right.
Yeah, I had a similar question, just the, you're talking about the, the amount of the fee, right?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm, if I'm a guy that owns an acre and I just wanted to do a three-lot subdivision, and now all of a sudden I got to pay 50,000 for, for what? Oh, for affordable housing, you know, just, that's a lot of.
So, yeah, I had a question about the amount of the fee. And also, how, what's this fee used for? And what you, what have you seen in other cities, how that's used for? You have, you address that?
So most cities want to see units built before, but we are seeing cities who do. Another thing that RCH has done, the cities have done through RCH is where they have a housing trust fund. And they use, most of them use general fund contributions, but some cities have put in-lu, you know, Bellevue has put in well over a million dollars of in-lu contributions that have been paid over the years. And they put it through the RCH trust fund process. And typically, those are assisting lower-cost housing than the ones we're talking about in this program. Because they're able to, the people who apply for funding are leveraging other public funds. So like Riverside Landing would be an example of a project that got funding through the RCH trust fund and is serving seniors at 50% of median and below. That's in your town. So that's one example locally.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else on threshold development, or are we ready to move to affordability level?
Okay.
I think we're ready.
Okay, so the affordability level, and this is, we talked some with the group last week. And we, one of the things we pointed out is that in a lot of cities now, they're setting their affordability goals at lower percent of median income for rental housing than they are for ownership housing. You had a pretty thorough conversation last week because of the multifamily area that we were looking at in Nike Hill. And I think you have to look, I can't remember my notes because I jumped on the plane right after the meeting. So we talked about, you know, a level of like, I can't remember if we were at 60 or, I think we were at 70% of median, but you were, wanted to know what the numbers were at 60% of median, I think that's where we landed. We talked a lot about in coming up with that number, you know, that, that the levels that we see in ownership though, were typically 80 to 100% of median is what we typically see. We didn't quite get there, and this is probably about where we left off in that conversation. To help fuel that conversation, we were showing the kind of jobs that we have in our communities. And, you know, what average salaries are. And I'm trying to think, nope, I don't have that. And so what we were showing is that we do have a lot of jobs that are paying 50%, 60%, equate to 50, 60% of median income. That county-wide, 24% of all households are at under 50%. Another 17% of all households are between 50 and 80. So we have a lot of households who are in this income range and housing affordability is getting harder. And we basically were saying that one reason you do the different affordability levels for ownership versus rental is because of the economic impact of that it's a bigger hit to try to create an affordable unit that's a rental, that's an ownership unit than it is to do as a rental unit. That, you know, the hit to the developer of doing a rental project, that the affordability, if it's at 80% of median, isn't a huge number, it's a number. But if you start going to ownership, that number starts to get to be pretty big. So that's one reason for doing different levels of affordability so that you're trying to have the impact to a developer be somewhat similar for. Also, in ownership housing, 80%, 100% is typically more price points where you have people who are ready to buy homes, et cetera, kind of thing. So those are different reasons why. So as we showed you in the previous slide, we had talked about in other cities, ownership units are typically been in the 80 to 100% range. And so what I wanted to do is to give, before you start talking about that, I wanted to talk with you about the, the economics a little bit, okay? Of how this works. And we showed you a chart similar to this for rental housing last week. And what we're trying to do in this chart is show you what you're asking a builder to do by doing affordable units versus what are you potentially giving them as public benefit and public benefits? So the top half of the chart is trying to look at what is the impact to the builder of providing what your affordability is. And this is why the question about a multiplex is so important. Because if you're, again, when we did some, looking at local data, looking at homes that were 1,500 for three bedrooms to 1,700 for four bedrooms in sort of a kind of attached townhouse configuration, we were saying that the market value of homes there is probably in the 400, 390 to 437,000. That if they went out and built something like that, that's probably what they would get for that size unit. And if you notice, if you add two of those together, that's 3,000 square feet, which is often what some of the single-family homes are being built for these days. So it's a similar amount of living space and, and things along those lines. So now, what we're saying is, what is, if we say we want that unit to be affordable at 80 or 100%, we've done it for both a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom unit configuration. We said, what is the sales price of that home to be affordable, of a home to be affordable at that price? And that's what you see in the line, the blue, the next blue line down. And you see that we say it's, at 80% of median, it's $275,000. And at 100% of median, it's $350,000 for a three-bedroom. And then it's about $25,000 higher if it's a four-bedroom. So then that shows you kind of the hit that you're asking a builder to take to do it. Now, one thing to keep in mind is, is that in the affordable units, we don't require the same interior finishes. So that gets a little bit to Commissioner Cabe's comment about, you know, you have more bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. But your finishes are, there's some offset to that because of those kind of things as well. So what we're saying is, is that the impact to the builder, the gap between those two figures is anywhere from, you know, for the 80% units, it's 100, a little over, you know, 115 to 137,000. If it's at 100% of median, you're looking at a 40 to 60,000 dollar impact. So then what we said down below is, what is, what are lot values? Raw lot land values? And we did some quick analysis, I can't say it's 100% accurate, but we did look and we found some properties that were small properties, ready to be subdivided but not subdivided yet, and how much they were selling if you looked at those small parcels. And it was actually really north of $100,000 a lot. But we put in 100,000, we round, we went down. And we said, so those, when you're buying raw land in the North King County area right now, it looks like you'll pay 100,000 for a raw piece of land that still needs to be subdivided. And that's about $100,000 a lot. So the idea here being is, you know, what we just said here is, well, if you ask for a third of the additional units you're allowing to be, right, affordable, one-third, one out of every three, you're giving $300,000 in value and asking for in exchange one affordable unit. Okay? So now we've also listed here other things some cities have done. Permanating fees, waived fees, or things like that, generally much lower numbers. They don't have the power of land values due around here. But that's another area where some cities have done, a number of cities do waive impact fees. Kirkland is one of those that looks at that in some cases. And then the other is, and this is more related to attached housing, especially if it has structured parking, allowing there to be reduced parking. We don't think reducing parking has that much of an impact here. You don't have to have garages in single-family neighborhoods. So a lot of the builders will just do a single garage. And that's, you know, that, we don't consider a savings per se because the code doesn't require it per se to be a garage. They just need to have typically two parking spaces, yes.
So Arthur, I'm looking at just about the middle of the table there, where we're talking about the incentives. You have $100,000 lot value.
Right.
So the, the bonus per affordable unit, is that, is that saying that, that the bonus is three units additional?
If this is.
For the project for every affordable unit that is developed?
Well, that's including an affordable unit too. Because in my math up here, keep in mind, that affordable, when I'm showing you a gap, I'm assuming full freight cost unit, which means that's a land value. So if I'm being fair in the math, these three units, one is affordable and two are market rate.
So for every affordable unit?
Right. For every three bonus unit, extra units?
One of them has to be.
One needs to be affordable.
I see.
Right, I mean, that, now, different cities have used different ratios based on what their math looks like, okay? So basically, you know, because you guys had a lot of conversation about is it incentive or not? Or, you know, stuff like that. Generally, when we go mandatory, we try to have the math work pretty well so that, yes, you're mandating it, but the economics look like you tried to be pretty fair in your, in doing your analysis.
But the, but the three additional units that are the incentive, those are above and beyond the?
The current zoning.
The current zoning density?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
Right.
And is that, is that typically, I mean, I know this is an example, is it typically a percentage? Or is it a, is it like a ratio like this?
When you were in, there are some areas like Kenmore right now, they created an area in their town center, downtown, whatever they, how they refer to it, where they have different zones. They've got R20 and R. Where they have different zones. They've got R20 and R, or R18, 24 and R30. And they're changing their rules to say you can go to 100 and something units per acre if you want. And there it is incremental. Depending on how high you go, they have different, they have a ratio. And that ratio changes because they want some of the units to be even more affordable. So it keeps changing. In a case like this where it's sort of, you're just making the change and it is what it is. Those have a tendency to try to translate that math into what's a reasonable percentage. So in Redmond, it's 10% of your total. And it's not some increment. It's just say we changed the zoning. You've got it accounted for because of zoning and we think the math works out that by asking for five, 10%, whatever you're asking for. When we looked at how much that represented as an increase, so here you're adding 15, you know. So for example, if you do the math in your head here, you're going from 37 to 52, it's 15 extra. If you did this math here, you'd be saying we'd want five out of the 52, that's about 10%. And so that's one way of sort of saying, so we're just going to let people know it's 10%. And that's where it lands. And I would say that's how you have to do it here. I'm just saying that's how we, some cities have just translated the rezone to a percentage.
It seems like the, I mean, this to me seems much easier in a multi-family or an attached zone.
Yep.
Once you start getting to the larger lots, then if you're allowing this kind of incentive, then you've got to really relax your lot standards. You know, you've got to be able to shrink lots to fit those extra lots in.
Right. Now here's, um, that's the thing is, that's why I'd sit down with staff and say, what does it take to fit a duplex unit? Now another way of also, and this is sort of another secondary benefit potentially of the duplexes. Would you allow, okay, so let's say you have the 10 lot subdivision. And you have to do one. Do you allow one of those lots to have two units on it? So you're really getting 11 homes. In that 10 lot subdivision. So you really, in that case, you gave, you still got that, all the, to get up to the 10, because before it used to only be eight or whatever. And now you're giving another extra unit even above and beyond that because on one of those lots. You get to put two units. And so that lot, it may now get, if you look at the math, it'll get the market rate lot. Right? The 390 or whatever, plus the affordable. So that lot is still gaining, you know, five, $600,000 of total income off that, that lot. Um, so you're, you're actually giving a little bit more than what, you know, by doing a multiplex, you may be allowing, if you write the rule, say for the affordability. We'll let you take one lot and put two on it and count it as one, still only as one unit and one lot. That's another way to give it a little, you know, you guys said you wanted to make sure the incentives felt strong. That's another way to make it feel like you're trying to be reasonable in that expectation.
Just real quick, I, I'm tracking with you up pretty much the whole way, but so on, in the three bedroom unit, the market price is 390, but then this affordable sales price is 275.
In the 80% example, correct.
To take, how did, take me through how you came up, how you arrived?
The 275?
Yeah, where'd the 275? How, how'd we get there?
What we do is we assume 30% of income for housing. And that includes for an ownership housing, that includes a mortgage, property taxes, hazard insurance. 10% down mortgage with a 30 year fixed, doesn't mean that's what people are going to do, but that's how we come up with the number.
Got it.
Um, that means you gotta have mortgage insurance. And so basically the same way a bank underwrites a person and we say, add those all, and add those in together. And that, and then we, um, and then you do the math on that. We have this circular kind of big fancy spreadsheet and it spits out a number. It shows you how much you can afford and that we assume 10% down and it spits out what that person can afford on a mortgage.
Got it. You kind of go backwards. You cut, you, you, you start with the payment.
Yes.
And that gives you the price.
Oh, right.
Okay, got it. Yep. All right. Good.
So, um, so the question here being, um, is, and again, for drafting purposes. Do you have any direction on if we should be drafting at an 80% or 100% affordability level, um, in drafting some language?
Mr. Steadman.
I think last week's, uh, direction was let's start at 70% and see what that looks like.
That was for rental. This is now an ownership situation.
Right, you're right. And then for ownership, I think we said, let's start at 80%, take a look at that and then we can adjust it from there.
I didn't remember that part.
Because again, these are just recommendations. We're going to look at the numbers and then we'll kind of massage them through as I, as I understand.
I'm supportive of that. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I might be supportive of it as well, but, and that was actually the most interesting thing I think I took away from last week. Was the fact, um, that Arthur was, uh, I can't remember who, maybe it was Eric who asked, but that, uh, basically it's super important. I know we're, we're just early on, we're just doing, we're just doing findings and, and discussion. But we don't want to set the percentage too high. You don't want to, you don't want to set it in code and then two years later go, oh, really? We should have done 75%. We should have done 70. Cause you can't go back and do it because it's considered almost a takings at that point.
Right.
Okay. So that's one thing I guess to consider when we're talking about 80 and 70%. I don't know what the right number is to look at, but.
And just to clarify, the point we're trying to make is if you decide, oh, let's go 100 because we're not so sure. And then you find out later builders are like, wow, this is great. This is easy. This, you know. Then you can't go back later and say, oh, we should have done 80. But if you start at 80 and you say, boy, it's really hard on people. It's not really working. You can go to 100. And it's because of the taking issue. So that was, I think, that's what I think Commissioner was talking about.
Chris Cecil. And so last week in our conversation about the rental side of this, 70 was comfortable.
Right.
For, for the rent, 70 to 80, I think was comfortable, but we wanted to.
Right.
To go down to 60 just to see what that looked like. And so, the, 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 the household market is, I mean, those ranges are higher. Just because of the, the ownership, you know, and so, so is an 80 in the household equivalent to like a 70 in rental or is there kind of a?
If you're looking at sort of the hit to the builder. I don't have both charts in front of me, but we have both charts for you when we did the, uh, when we come back and look at Nike. But that's, you'll see that the mag, and again, but land values are also higher for single family as well. So the amount you're giving is greater. So when you look at sort of the rate, it's sort of the ratio thing that starts, you know, it's the combination of, the affordability level and how much, what percentage you're asking for. So that's, and I think when we come back with a scenario, you'll sort of see how the math adds up. And if you say that math looks too tight. Or it looks okay, then we adjust some either on the affordability or how, what percentage are affordable. To get it to a point where you feel like it's a reasonable trade off.
Well, I guess maybe the other side is, uh, what, what's the market for that? You know, I mean.
For the.
The 80 to 100% range, um, the sales price that's attached to those, are those hitting what we want them to hit? And I know there's, there's the, kind of the two sides, right? There's the.
So just.
The buyer and the developers.
This might be a quicker way for me to find my slide. So at 80% of median, you're talking about household incomes of 57,000 for, well, for, we're doing with three bedroom and four bedroom units. So you're probably looking at incomes of 65 to 70 plus thousand dollars a year. If that's the income you would be targeting. So that's the equivalent of over $30 an hour type salaries. Um, if you're at median income, you're targeting incomes of like 80,000 to 90,000 plus. So that just gives you an idea of. No, I know, that's, I know. So it's, it's, that's at the low end. It's even a little bit higher because you go to the three bedroom. You're going to be using the 89, that's the income level you're basically dealing with. Thanks, Mike. And for the three bedroom, it's like 70,000. So that's the kind of income we're talking about and, and the difference between those two income levels.
So I guess we're kind of relying on you in terms of this range of affordability that we're looking at.
Right.
To some degree, um, you're just going to have to advise us and, you know, we'll look at it and, and see what the numbers look like. But, but we're not really the, the number crunchers. So, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to defer to Arthur on this one. Um, it's just interesting that King County prices are at an all time high. So I think this gap becomes pretty significant the further down we go on, the median scale, which I'm not saying I'm against, but, um, you know, so from 115,000, that's going to grow.
So that was, right. So part of the conversation, and this was, oops, much more so, um, when we were talking about last week and we're looking at multifamily. And we're talking about rental is, for example, when we're doing our math here. We're trying to do the math from new product and not average what's in the community. So with the rental, what you, and you really see the difference like in rental, new product versus average rents in the community, you, that's higher. So when we're doing our math, we are working from what we think the builder is getting for new product. That's what we try to do. So it's the, it's not the builder going, wait, mine's a lot more, so they impact more. And we're trying to see what they're doing. With rental, what we found, and this is one reason I think you said, let's look below 80. Is that yes, at 80% of median, you might be below what the builder is going to get for that new product. But that 80% is pretty similar to a lot of what you have in your community today. So if you're trying to help address needs that aren't being well met, you try, you need to try to get even lower if you can. But that makes a bigger gap and you need to account for that. Um, and it's a little bit the same here, the same conversation. Is that at 100% of median, I would say that there are condos in that price range that you're seeing there. If you're at 80, you're now trying to hit an area that I, you know. From a long-term macro point of view. In our country, when you get to set, first time home buyers have typically been around 70% of median income. But when you get to that income level, you should be able to find housing in your community if you want to buy. That's kind of a healthy housing market. Um, you can see that's not where we're really, there's not a lot of that. And so that makes it harder for first time buyers in particular. But, you know, when I've been doing this for 30, 40 years and I was in grad school and stuff and you looked at where, how does a housing market work? And if you want to have a nice, steady, stable housing market, you need to start having, you want to have ownership housing. If you want to help people move into how ownership and move up the ladder eventually. And a lot of healthy communities, you have housing affordable at 70% of median for owners. That's from a macro kind of point of view.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So, um, so the other question was alternative compliance, I believe was. Yes, I think at this, I think we've sort of talked a little bit about the number thing and I think we'll come to you with a proposal based on the 80 and showing you the math thing. So the other is alternative compliance and there, I think we already talked about that, um, like, you know, with the fee and lose. I think we've sort of covered that already in our conversation. So those are the key questions. And if there are others, if you want to take just five minutes, I was going to give you a quick overview of sort of the general standards. Or, or not, that can wait till we have them, but.
Before that, again, I, I wasn't, not being here last week, is there a, um, did we give kind of a consensus recommendation on these, uh, alternative compliances, whether were we in favor of paying a fee or whether actually, um, driving the provision of affordable housing in another location? I mean, what?
This is a conversation we had about 15 minutes ago.
Yeah.
Where you wanted it on, you didn't want to give alternative compliance over a certain, you wanted to see the units built. But under a certain size, yes, to allow alter, to allow the in lieu.
All right, got it. Okay. Real quickly, so part of what we asked last week, kind of at the end of the discussion was, okay. We're throwing all these numbers around and you know what it looks like, but we don't really know what it looks like on a project. And so part of what we asked was, can you, um, you know, with these, all these ranges and, and numbers that you're giving us, can you bring us some, some visual, some kind of? Yeah, how would this actually play out? Yeah, play out in a particular project. Got it. Was kind of where we, we landed last week. Good.
Okay.
All right.
So if you want to take five minutes, I can sort of cover kind of basic standards. So, these are now pretty universal elements of affordable, of, of a program that we would be bringing to you. Again, you can play around with it, but this is what we would be starting with is, is some of this is sort of dictated by, state law that said if cities are going to do enabling legis, you know, there's state law that made it more clarity. Cause it was very much up in the air until four or five years ago. Gee, can you do incentives and have affordability linked to it? And the state finally said, okay, we're going to write some rules to make it clear you can. But we're also going to write some rules about when you do it, what we think you should be doing, some of the things we think you ought to do. So, these standards are a little bit of mix of that and the practice we've had in other cities. So the first is duration of affordability. State legislation basically directs to be 50 years minimum. Um, what we've typically seen and how we'll, what we'll be drafting is for rental housing, it's for the life of the building. Because it's linked to a land use approval. For ownership housing, it says it's 50 years. Or if needed, this is where the complexity of the real world comes in. If needed, you can go down to 30 and the needed is so that you can comply so that projects, or homes can get loans from Fannie Mae and FHA. And because FHA and Fannie Mae have rules about if you have a covenant like this, there's rules of what those covenants have to say. And so we basically, um, have language that's basically says you want 50 under state law. But if you have to because of Fannie Mae, you can go down to 30 years, basically. So that's what we would be proposing for duration. And that's what all the other cities have been doing in the last five plus years.
Do you guys ever go indefinite with a house with a personal residence?
No.
Like a rental?
Uh, what we've done though for ownership, because the underwriting world wants to see a definitive time period. Is we have built into the covenant, this isn't in the code, but what we've built into the covenant. Is the first sale that ever occurs when there isn't the covenant in place. The homeowner who sells it only gets what they would have gotten if it sold under the covenant. And any balance above that goes back to the city for affordable housing. So that was our way to basically create permanent benefit. But having to work with the private sector and how the financing world works. Next is the designation of the affordable units. Uh, we typically allow the developer to make proposals. But they have to be approved. Uh, and they basically need some level of dispersal. Um, in the community now, and some small subdivisions, if you have a duplex and there's two or units, obviously they're where they are. They need to be a bedroom mix comparable to the overall development, but some cities have said. We won't make it go over three bedrooms. Um, you know, some cities, and we'll give you language like that to say like in a single family, it's okay to be three bedrooms. The size of the units, we will say they do not have to be, we want the bedroom mix to match, but the size of the affordable units do not have to match. Now we'll probably have some language that says there's a floor. And if you do that, it might need director approval. So we'll give you some language that, that leaves some discretion for the size of the units to be smaller than the market rate units. Um, which is another way that you sort of help the economics kind of thing for it overall. And then the other piece is tenure. They must be the same form of occupancy. So rental for rental, owner for owner. Any questions on those? Okay? The next is design related. Uh, first is finishes. Uh, the language says exterior finishes are to be comparable or, uh, as the other market rate units. The interior to be entry level ownership housing. So they don't have to be the same level of finish. Uh, or, um, or, and I can't remember, we have language for rental too, and I can't remember exactly what that says. But it's basically saying, we don't necessarily expect the same level of standard finish, but we do expect owner finishes for owner housing. Um, and stuff like that. So that's one. And then the development standard flexibility, which we talked about with you. I did put in the parking in the open space that's more usually around multifamily. Um, here it would be the multiplex concept. So, uh, that's, that's the second point. Any questions on that area? Okay, timing of availability. So this actually, especially like in Riverside, this is where it gets a little tricky. Cause how do you make sure you get your affordable units? So we always have language that says. Units must be made available and the comparable time is the overall development. And for single family, that means in the covenants, we have a phasing plan, which basically will trigger that. You know, at some point after so many lots, you, you, you'll get it to be the last one. We have to, we work with the builder and they have to agree that, you know, it's after, if it's 10, by the sixth lot or the seventh lot, you have to do the affordable unit. So there's always a phasing plan to make sure that the affordable units are built in a timely manner. Affordability covenant, there will be a requirement for covenants to ensure the affordability at the level and the duration is required. Um, and it's, the language in there, and the code will say it a form acceptable to the city. Um, and, and it lists the kind of things that are addressed in it.
So the meat of the affordability language is really more in the covenants than in the code?
Correct. The nuance of how a builder does it is in that agreement. Right? So that's where the monitoring they have to do, you know, the reports we have to get once a year for rental. What the homeowner does when they want to sell, um, the requirement for them to live in the unit. Um, and if they ever want to rent, we will only allow. the requirement for them to live in the unit, and if they ever want to rent, we will only allow it for a short period of time for cause. So these are not meant to be speculative homes. These are meant to be owner-occupied, which in one area, in our condominiums, condos, so that's a good thing, because in condos, you got to have a certain percentage owner-occupied, and they can at least count on those units doing that. And then we talked some already about alternative compliance. What we'll do for alternative compliance is we'll have a basic language section, and then in the individual sections, we'll say, alternative compliance, or these parts of it apply for this zone, and the other parts do or don't. So, but we'll have a standard kind of alternative compliance language, and then you can just refer to that or customize it for an individual neighborhood. So those are the basic type standard conditions that would be sort of in the central part of the code.
Right. Any questions or comments on standard provision? Excellent. I like what I see. Obviously, a lot of work was done last week. I appreciate being brought up to speed, and I'm very excited about this. I, what, so as a next step, as far as when it comes back in front of us, what, what do you suggest there?
I think Nike has the, I think we're still waiting a little bit from the council, right?
Right, we're waiting for.
Has the council provided any guidance of, in terms of their thinking on this?
Not yet. We're hoping that'll happen on the fifteenth, next week. And then Nike comes back on the twenty-third, so that'll be, I think you'll, you'll take this another step further at that point. And then on April thirteenth was, is the date that we're projecting for this one to come back, and, and I'm hoping that we may, at that point, be ready to make a, make a recommendation.
Okay, so that, should we have a motion to continue this particular discussion to April thirteenth?
Yes, yes, that would, when you're, when you're ready for, for that.
Yeah, Commissioner Cabe.
One quick question. We're close to the finish line, it appears, or close to at least getting draft language. So maybe we don't need to go this route, but I was hoping we could decouple the affordable housing from some of the other items that we were talking about, and just have a few focus sections on affordable housing solely.
Well, I think we are decoupled. I, I mean, I, I see this kind of tracking on its own kind of timeline. I mean, we've certainly got, we've kind of made some progress on the Riverside Hill zone, Riverside Drive zoning to debt tonight. Nike Hill is moving in its direction, and we're also have guidance on clustering. So there's kind of a number of things. Do you see this, how do you see this as being coupled to any of those other initiatives?
With what we decided tonight, I think that kind of solves one issue, but Nike Hill, we really, I don't think are close to taking any resolution on any portion of that sub-area.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I mean, is you're thinking that this affordability language might play a role in Nike Hill as well?
Yes, and I think it should be maybe just a separate session where people specifically interested in affordable housing can come and hear and listen about that.
I, I, I really agree with that. I mean, I think that this is something that's just going to fit for a variety of places inside of Bothell, but.
I, I have another thought on that, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Arthur, but as we're talking about rezoning some of these and upzoning some of these, I think this is an ideal time to go, hey, we're, we're giving you, Mr. Developer, Mr. Landowner, an opportunity to upzone your property from ninety-six hundred to seventy-two hundred or whatever. And in return for that, we would like to have an affordability housing clause in there as well. So, so, you know, we're, we're taking you from thirty-five units to fifty-two units, but, you know, we want five of those additional units to be, to be affordable housing. I, I think it, I think it dovetails in perfectly. I think now's the time to, to, to kind of talk through that.
I, and I agree. I guess my main point is, I think we should solve some of the larger overarching goals of either affordable housing and clustering before we continue talking about them for the last twenty minutes of each of these sub-areas. I would like to, you know, I, I agree, but I think we need to address it now, and, you know, rather than have four or five more sessions on Shelton View and the Nike Hill sub-area, I'd rather say affordable housing, we're going to look at that, and we're going to look at clustering the next two sessions. We're going to try to come to an agreement on what we're doing there as opposed to.
And then, and then that would be applied to.
Right.
A zoning request.
Yeah, exactly.
That makes sense. David, is there any, is there any guidance from the city council on that? Because really, we're here.
Well, like I say, there, there, we're hoping there will be next Tuesday. But there's another factor in all of these. This is a, both a comprehensive plan and a code amendment, as is Nike Hill, and we are only allowed to do one of, one set of comprehensive plan amendments each year. So we will, I guess, the, the direction we were going was to, to wrap up these items, but, but then we would hold them all for council adoption toward the end of the year. And then in the meantime, if they do give the, the go-ahead on, on the affordable housing, then we can focus some time, and that could essentially be separated out to focus on the, the citywide provisions for affordable housing. And I, I, we hadn't really discussed it before, but I can take it back to the staff and see if, if there might be a way to have that discussion and then come back with these, the sub-area specific requirements for Nike Hill and South Riverside. If that's, if that gets at what you're suggesting, Commissioner Cabe.
Yeah, sorry to be a little long-winded getting to my point, but, yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping for. It just seems like the processes are never going to close out when we're trying to co-mingle three different elements with each meeting. If we could just come to resolution on affordable housing and clustering independently, then take a look at the sub-areas. I, I think it would expedite the process.
And in the future, that's how these rezones will be done. Once we have that citywide, that code enabling with all these standard provisions, then it would be just a matter of, with each rezone, determining what the specific requirements make sense for that area. So we are kind of approaching it in a, a little bit different fashion at this point, but let us get, discuss that and get back to you. I don't think we need to, you know, make a decision on that tonight.
And I would just add, you're not alone in that you started your affordable housing provisions by having a specific thing to look at. I mean, it makes it easier. If I don't have anything for you specifically to look at, it's so conceptual.
Right.
So you're not alone in that you're designing a system. Well, as we're doing in the past, this is sort of, this is hopefully one of the benefits of being a member of RCH is, in the past, I have written just one code that covered everything we talked about here for that neighborhood. And then four years later, we do another neighborhood, write the whole thing, and then we go back and realize we didn't, everything didn't match up. So what we're doing here is we've sort of learned and re-zoned, right, or code rewrites for a couple cities. Gee, some things are universal, put those central, and then allow you to focus on the substantive issues in each neighborhood. So while we are being cognizant of that approach, where we started with most cities is you have a real, real-life situation and you work through it.
Yeah.
Because that's the best way to understand it.
Yeah. So, good discussion. Any other, I don't want to cut comments off, officially.
So just, and I think maybe, I don't know if it's what Commissioner Cabe was getting at, and I, I agree with everybody here on all aspects of this. I think it's like if somebody was to look at the planning commission agenda, and they would have to delve into the, to even know we're talking about affordable housing right now. They might be real excited about it, be interested.
Gotcha.
And it's, there's nothing on here that says anything about affordable housing.
Yeah, good point.
We actually have a session where it's open house, affordable house. And, and just in closing on that, I'd like to actually, I mean, we're commissioners up here giving guidance about the planning of the city, and I, I'm really interested to hear about the citizens and homeowners of Bothell, developers, who can give me more guidance and get outside of my head to think of other things that I should be thinking about, and so I think that'll be really exciting.
Good. So I, I think that's a good point. So Dave, going forward, let's go ahead and call out both clustering and affordability housing as kind of noted items on our agendas going forward, which would be good both for us as well as any other citizens that would be looking at, would be interested in this topic. So let's have that called out. So you would, you'd suggested April thirteenth as the next meeting, when you can come back to us with some language. Does it really, so today it's March ninth, it's, you're going to need about a month, or is there something? I think our next meeting is actually set for, not next week, but the twenty-third, what was that?
So twenty-third is, is scheduled for when Nike Hill will come back to you, and you've already continued it to that day, so. And Arthur, just let me know that, that there, I, I would have to talk with Bruce about whether there would be enough other issues to, to grapple with on Nike Hill.
Well, and I know that he's also very much taking the lead on clustering, and I don't know if that was going to be part of that.
So that's another one that's going to be, be initiated or not by planning, by council next week. And then if they do initiate, then, then we will have to tackle that on a citywide scale. So I think we, we still need to come back to you with Nike Hill in some form on the twenty-third, since we have continued that to that date.
Sure, sure. I, I think, I think what I'm hearing and what I just want to communicate is, is that we'd like affordability, affordability to be called out as its own agenda item, and sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And have it move on its own independently, so it could be applied to either Shelton View or to Riverside or whatever, wherever else. I think that's what we're trying to tell you.
Okay.
But are you telling me that, given that, still April thirteenth is most likely the next time we're going to have affordability, affordable housing on our agenda?
That's where I have to balance, I've got the same conversation in Mercer.
Right, exactly.
Wednesday night.
And I know, so, so you're making some commitments to come back to us with some, some language that we can really grapple with and hopefully approve, so.
And we've started, you know, a lot of this already, so we can move pretty quickly. It's much about hearing your comments tonight and talking with staff and figuring out what makes sense to, because what I'm sort of hearing a little bit tonight is, it might be nice just to talk about one night, affordable housing, and do it for both, and you get to see them next to each other, and, and that's almost what I'm thinking I'm hearing from you.
Well, and I think, I think, I don't know if you guys would agree, but I think the heavy lifting on these two sub-areas has been, for the most part, done. And especially with, with the Riverside area, I think we've essentially landed there, and then there's some flux with some of the, you know, DNR issues on, on the Nike Hill, but for the, for the most part, I think we're, I think we're largely there. So it will be, I think, focused on these two issues from this point on, I think. So having said that, most, most likely, we'll not be able to have affordability, affordable housing on the March twenty-third agenda. That's, that's what I'm hearing. So should we just go ahead as planned and as continuing to April thirteenth?
Well, yes, so you've already continued Nike Hill to, to March twenty-third.
Right.
For South Riverside, yes, the, the next available date is April thirteenth.
What is, what else on South Riverside is there really for us to, to discuss?
Really just the affordable housing aspect, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so April thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay. So that, so that, I guess, on our agenda then, for the Nike Hill, March twenty-third. Yeah. That's a continued public hearing.
Correct.
Can we, and I think maybe this is what you're getting at, can we, when we notice that meeting, or if we've already have, I don't know if we have or not, I don't think we have.
We have.
We have, okay. Maybe it would make sense for the noticing of that meeting to mention affordable housing, so that people could, could come and. You talking about March twenty-third, or? Yeah, yeah, because we're going to be talking about. That's not going to be on the agenda on March twenty-third. Well, it's an opportunity, though, for people to come and.
Yeah. We're going to have to get back to you with that. I need to discuss this with Bruce and with Arthur, so.
What I am hearing.
So we'll communicate back with you about what aspects of Nike Hill will, will be on the agenda for the twenty-third.
I think just real simply at this late hour, we're in a public hearing, we need to continue this public hearing.
Right.
What date are we going to continue the public?
April thirteenth.
All right, can we have a motion to continue this public hearing on affordable, affordable housing to April thirteenth?
Excuse me, you're, we are continuing the hearing on the South Riverside.
South Riverside Drive.
And code amendments.
And code amendments.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing regarding the South Riverside Drive Plan and Code Amendments to April thirteenth.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Rest of our agenda, study session, known, old business. Any other reports from staff?
Yes, I do have one. The city's capital facilities plan committee needs a volunteer from the planning commission. Mike Stahl was the, the planning commission representative previously. The commitment is for two all-day meetings, one on Tuesday, August ninth, and the other on Wednesday, August seventeenth. You don't need to make a decision right now, you can wait until the, the assignments, the appointments are made by council, but I wanted to put that out there, if there is somebody who wanted to volunteer and snag that position while it's available.
Yeah.
That is, that is, that is, so we are looking for someone there.
Yeah, Dave, thanks for bringing that up. I've, I've done that before. Very valuable if you really want to learn about the city's six-year plan and where we're headed as far as our finances and plans from a capital project standpoint. I, I found it fantastic. I, I did it four years ago, I don't need to do it again, but is there anyone that's, I don't see any.
I'd be interested.
All right, so both Commissioner Cecil and Cabe, it looked like they're interested.
Depending on appointments, but yeah.
Yeah, so we have two that are interested, we'll make a determination.
Actually, Steve, I, I would be interested.
Oh, all right, Commissioner Lee, so there are three that are at least interested.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Report, yeah, Commissioner Cabe.
When are the appointments made? Do you have a date on that, just as far as?
For the new planning commissioner?
Yeah.
We're hoping next week, but there have been years when they've taken more than one, one meeting to make those decisions.
Thanks, all right.
And Steve, do we have a, we have an opportunity to meet on, do we have anything planned, Dave, for April sixth?
I believe there is something on the agenda for April sixth, which is why the thirteenth was the, the available date, but I don't have that in front of me here, so. But I'll, well, it'll certainly be coming out in the April imagined notice, and we were trying to get a little bit longer projected agenda in front of you, but there are just a lot of moving parts right now, so. But I, we can get back to you via email on that.
Okay, great. I was just thinking about, you know, affordable housing, if you wanted, wanted to break it out in a specific session, if we didn't have anything planned that night, then maybe that would be an opportunity to do it, but, thanks, Dave.
Any other reports from members? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We're adjourned.